We good? Are we good here? Submission, a big one at local schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, and indivisible.
Jeremy, would you mind doing the roll call, please?
Mr. Crowell.
Here.
Ms. Dorish.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fuji.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
And that'll bring us up to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I will be typing in what Jeremy on the Treasury report, but I do have something not on the agenda because it was just announced last night.
Yesterday.
So I'm sure all of you are part by now because the governor announced last night that he would be lifting orders looking to second. Obviously, that's after we're out of school, so we'll have a couple of weeks here that we're still in school and still needing to follow the protocols. So just, uh, it'll be a fun two weeks. Uh, graduation coming up, obviously, the 22nd. I do have a call with the Health Department today, so if I learn of any changes or anything different, I'll let y'all know. But otherwise, our understanding is that we would continue, um, the same practices that we've had in place all year. Wanted to kind of note that with the announcement last night. Didn't know if anyone had any other questions that I can pass along from my call today or for me.
But just to clarify, I mean, if there were any changes, those would be Health Department or the--
Correct, yeah.
Just like the recess change that occurred not too long ago.
Yeah, we've gotten pretty good feedback on that. I don't think any, um, I haven't heard of any issues, so, you know, we are, um, they have let us be a little bit more, um, I don't want to say relaxed, but outside, and obviously, that reflects what the CDC has been saying as well. So we have been letting the kids take the masks off when they're outside during recess, if they're running around. Um, as that falls within the criteria, they're not right by somebody for 15 minutes or more. So that's gone pretty well, but again, the expectation is still in the building that they would have those on. If we hear anything that changes from the Health Department's interpretation of anything going on, then then obviously, we'll message that to families. Otherwise, um, our intention is that we'll continue with the protocols we have in place through the end of the school year.
Angie, is there any plan to offer a vaccine clinic for 12 to 15-year-olds, even though we'll be out of school?
I'm hoping to learn more about that today. That is in the works with the Health Department to be able to offer that. Um, they were looking at doing just one location in Delaware, so we moved out. And I know, um, Lady Truax, our district nurse, who's also on those calls, asked about trying to get something on the east side of the county, so they were going to look and see if that was possible. Um, obviously, we have the little health clinic up at the square, could we, um, you know, utilize the staff and and have something here in town? So I'm not sure if they're able to do that logistically. Obviously, as I'm sure you can imagine, their support is pretty thin, but we have requested that. If they're not able to do it in Sunbury, I know their intention is to at least do something in Delaware, which we would be able to push out and message to our families. So hopefully, I'll know more about that today. All right, that's all I have under superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Jeremy.
All right. Wanted to, because we are getting close to when we would need to start passing resolutions if we were to go on in the fall for a levy, uh, just wanted to revisit this conversation in front of you. You have, uh, the election filing schedule as well as the-- a a couple scenarios, what I'll say, with the updating of the five-year forecast. We will obviously go into much more detail next week when I'm presenting the five-year forecast, but the the top sheet that you have in this packet is kind of showing where just high-level numbers, where we're at and our our bottom line. As you will see, uh, in the fall, we had a about a $37,000 ending cash balance, and we have moved to a 7.3. And while that seems like a a huge swing, it is, yes. But at the same time, you recall, we went into last school year not knowing a lot of things and, um, budgeting very conservatively as well as looking at our revenue from a kind of skeptical standpoint with income tax. Uh, at that point, we had been cut by about $600,000 in our, still a net $600,000 in our our state revenue, which we've got some of that back and being told that we will can plan on getting, uh, the remainder of that most likely back when we go into next school year. So there are many things that go into why we are such, um, such a a swing there. But what it it provides for us is at least to be able to have a conversation, um, on on timing and what that looks like. So if you turn to the next page, I gave you two, two different scenarios. One, we have, we've talked about going in the fall, and then the other is would there be a a possibility in the spring? Had we had this conversation probably about, um, a, well, we did have it about a month or two ago, but if we'd had it a couple of weeks ago, even before we dug into the numbers and how trends have changed, I probably would have still said and been adamant about a a fall. Part of me, as we're going into, um, some new initiatives, um, looking at staffing, part of me still would would, the conservative side would say, uh, we need to go in the fall, but I think there are possibilities to to also go in the spring. So what I've I have in front of you is a 7.9 mil, what that would look like. Part of the goals and things we have talked about is keeping a a 60-day cash balance. So this 7.9 gets us through the next year into fiscal year '26, which would be, um, I'm I'm including that because that will really be the the five-year forecast, pardon me, in, um, uh, once we turn this fiscal year. And then the, um, if you look then, the last page, not saying that a spring would have to be a 9.99, but that gets us, you'll see in '26 roughly, to the equivalent financial position that we we would be with a spring or a with a fall, um, uh, 7.9. So with that, wanted to have a conversation, revisit the the timeline. If we did need to start putting resolutions on, uh, to go in the fall, we just, we need to be at that point. And and wanted to give these different different things. One thing I will note that is not included into this this scenario is still the round three ESAR dollars. And that's partly, they're still in from, I don't believe the applications for applying have even come out yet. And we're still waiting on what is the final of all of the the different things that we need to be doing to spend those. So I have not included that in there, and that that is about a million and a half dollars that we would also be using to, um, start some of the the things we've talked about. So that would be m- mental health support, nursing. Those are pieces that fall within allowable purposes for those federal dollars. So there there is a a little bit in this that we would be using those for, too.
I guess that's a big thing that I wanted to clarify, the kind of changes we've taken in these conversations is, before we got the amount of federal funding that we've got, I mean, not that we've gotten a ton compared to other districts, but with this last round, um, I would have said there's no way that we can wait until next year. I think we need to be very clear to people that if you decide to wait until spring, it's because we are paying for things out of one-time federal funds. This isn't, um, money that we anticipate obviously getting moving forward, so it would have to be replaced to be able to not only maintain the services we have, but be able to grow those programs, especially for the whole child supports that we've talked about in terms of counseling, mental health, behavioral supports, et cetera. So that that's just a big thing to clarify, that, um, that money would be able to pay for in the short term, but it's one-time money. So I think we need to be very clear on that messaging if that's the route we decide to go. The need does not go away as we look out over the long term. And as we look out at-- when it comes to those whole child supports in the areas of counseling, mental health, and and nursing.
And and probably just the other thing to add, because I I hit on the revenue side, but the expenditure side. I think the the three years, three-plus years that I've been here, we've been watching this this, the same trend line where it's about year three, four, but we've been able to change insurance plans. We've we've, uh, reduced some of our supports. For, I think, last year, we, coming into the school year, uh, we reduced some of the number of tutors that we have. Our STEM program has been gone, we we didn't have it this year, um, so those individuals could be used for our VLP. So there have been things that we have done expenditure side that has allowed us to continue to spread, spread the dollars, push it out, and and continue to, um, push this timeline down the road.
Pretty much of that is accounted for services. So obviously, the insurance, the insurance move was something that we were able to do that did not cost services to kids. But, um, the other things that we've done, it's been either postponing services, putting them on hold, or just not having them. So I think that's important to continue to reiterate to people. It's it's not because we haven't needed the money, it's because we've not provided things to get there and to be able to balance. I just want to share this with you again. I know we're coming up, as Jeremy mentioned, um, we would need to put a resolution on next month if you want to go on in the fall, so it's really important that we continue to discuss this. Um, as we've offered before, if there's any other information you need, any questions we can answer to help you make your decision, please let us know, but we're kind of at a point where we we really need a decision if we want to do fall or if you want to wait until a later election.
Will the 1.5 million ESAR be reflected in the five-year forecast next week?
It will, not next week, no. Again, we're still, we're still waiting to see a lot of the the pieces on that.
Some we could probably talk about, though. Like, here's what we know we still need to pay for.
Yes.
And and then here's what that would--
Yeah.
And I feel like we could at least talk about it to give you an idea of where that stands.
Correct.
And then, and this, um, revenue expenditure sheet here, is that that's based on the 250 home projection that we had talked about now for a number of months?
Yep, so the staffing is based on that 250, um, homes scenario. And, uh, I would say that the revenue projections are, uh, looking at historical trend. So it may be a little bit more conservative, too, than a, if there's 250 homes. But yes, the staffing is is including those positions and the costs.
And and the three scenarios, I mean, it doesn't deviate, the three scenarios just reflect that.
What's that?
The 250, uh, there's not multiple scenarios here based on 150 or 300.
Correct, it is all, it, yes, based on the the board's directive in, uh, I think it was February.
Right.
We've used those 250 numbers, mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep, sure.
Jeremy, on the, excuse me, the third page, the where the, we push it out?
Yes.
Is this is pushed out to spring or the next fall?
So--
The 9.99.
Either one, either one would be the same scenario because of the calendar year collection cycle in a in a school year or fiscal year. So anything that was, that would be approved in the calendar year '22, so that would be either a spring of '22 or a fall, which would, which would hit our our fiscal year '22 and and then the fall would hit the fiscal year '23, either one of those would not be collected until January of '23.
The only thing I would caution on the difference, because the collection is the same, is that we would start the next school year not knowing if we had funds for staffing. So if we passed in the spring, we would know going into that next school year that we could provide that staffing. If we waited until fall, um, it would it would be harder to do. Probably look a little different with staffing.
So Jeremy, you indicated that you weren't necessarily recommending a 9.99 mil levy in the spring. So what what do we look like if in the spring we look at a 7.9 kind of as we're looking at in the fall? I guess where, how much more does that set us back as we're looking?
So so really, what it comes down to when we're looking at a millimile amount and and it's it's looking at the the timeline. How long, if we continue on the same trend, um, can you push out another ask? Or what is the the amount of another ask? So, um, whereas the 7.9 in the fall is potentially getting us four years, a a 7.9 in the spring would would probably get about three years. Obviously, if growth doesn't come the way that it does or or just we're we're seeing finances not shaking out, I think this team has has shown that we we look where we can to make sure that we're making ends meet. But really, any time that you're pushing thing off, things off, that's a another year that you haven't collected that. So it either pushes, it it either makes your s- your next ask in the future a larger one or it it makes a timeframe that you can use those dollars and spread out, um, a sh- a shorter one.
And then also, I know at one point, we had seen a document that indicated, okay, if we make this ask, kind of that levy--
Mm-hmm.
--cycle. So I think what you're saying, kind of, that may change that depending on where we go and how frequently we need to ask. And I think this kind of goes to Brad's point that he's made, that we haven't necessarily asked when we've needed and we just keep making these cuts and, okay, well, we can figure out where to find and not necessarily providing the services that we believe the kids need and that we think our community wants us to provide, so, I don't know.
I guess the one, excuse me, the one comment I would make is just an appreciation for the collective efforts administratively. You're the math guy, so help me out here. But, um, you know, if if we did go to spring, that would be 12 years between new money asks in a district that's grown at a minimum at that point, its enrollment by one-third. And I don't know, I I, I'll put $20 down that there's not another district in the state of Ohio that's been able to manage to that perspective. So I appreciate your efforts related to that, but I guess where I'm where I'm at right now, there's kind of three major things that we need to be able to tackle if I were to put it kind of at a high level. One is the whole child support thing that we've been talking about. I think we've kind of agreed it's worth trying to still push ahead with, even though we don't have a specific solution for this problem. At least by consensus, I think that's been our discussion. I think there's a, the notion of electives and programming and the things that we're not doing right now for our students. You know, in my own personal case, I was having a discussion this morning with my junior about what to do next year. And while loading up on some College Credit Plus courses sounds really good, and there's nothing really wrong with that, part of that discussion's also kind of muted because there was really not much more for her to do elective-wise
Yep.
based on where she's at right now. So it's almost a non-discussion because what we've traditionally done with electives has gone to the third issue in my mind, which is growth. And I think what we've traditionally done in my time on the board is we've tried to balance those first two things as effectively as we could, but the number one priority's been trying to deal with growth. And so all those additional resources and all those choices that we've made have been about trying to have the right resources in place to accommodate the growth for, I don't want to say the minimum, because I don't want to downgrade the efforts and things you guys are doing, but more the basics, I guess, that I would say. And and not that there's anything wrong with being focused in those basics, but some of these things like, you know, simple electives that enrich the education opportunity of our students at a high school level and allow them to do some more critical thought in some other subjects in a little bit of a deeper fashion, be it a history or a literature or a technology of some fashion. You know, whatever we end up deciding doing, for me, that's, that's, that's what we're risking right there is the whole child piece and the and the more enriched educational experience for our kids. And I and I guess I shouldn't even speak to it specifically at the high school level because it does, too, I think it was Sheri's point, go back to STEM, and and maybe some other things we might be able to do in terms of art and music. We've been able to, um, pull off the orchestra process despite all of these things, but I don't know that orchestra is the only thing musically that would be a potential good option and something to be helpful for students in our district. And so I just, for me, those are the things that I'm trying to think about as a way, kind of where and when from an ask perspective and trying to be a little more mindful of those other two items and not just how do we just keep expanding for the growth to 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 serve, trying to choose my words carefully again, because I'm not trying to downgrade anybody's effort, but to serve, um, kind of the basic needs. I'd like to be able to be a little bit more in basic. I don't want to be the Ferrari, right? But I'd like to be able to do something a little bit more, um, as this community grows. And for the students here that, to somebody else's point, it might have been Steve or 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 Leanna's, that, um, you know, these choices have been made at the expenses of some of those things for our students and what we're not providing, so.
And and I just want to say that we're not offended by that because we agree wholeheartedly with you that we want to be able to offer more of those services and courses. And it has come down to, as you know, over the years, that as we've gotten more students, well, we'd like to add this elective so kids have another opportunity instead of sitting in study hall, but instead, we just got 50 new students over here and we need to add two classroom teachers. So we we agree completely and obviously are very much in support of being able to get some funds to pay for your first two points. And I'm not offended at all by that because, yes, we have had to do that to accommodate growth, unfortunately.
Any other comments or thoughts on the levy piece?
My question for you all is what next? Because we will need to know by next Thursday, really, if you want us to have a resolution for you in June for the fall. We need at least some direction, I would say, by next Thursday to be able to move forward one way or the other. So I'd like to put this as another discussion point on next week's agenda. And then if we could get some direction at that point would be helpful.
That's kind of what I was going to recommend with the hope of that outcome of that discussion to say, let's look at doing something for the fall or or not. Is that, does that sound like good next step to everyone?
Part of my question related to that, though, will be like what, where the 1.5 million for ESAR might might offset other opportunities, as we've talked about your points, Brad. You started with .1 whole child. I can only speak for myself in terms of my belief on that on that topic. So to know that that money, it can offset one time, not long-term, uh, some of those considerations. I'd like to just know what that big picture might look like, as then it could have trickle, trickle, I don't use that term. It would have downstream impact in terms of your ideas for Area Two electives and Area Three growth.
Okay. Is that something you can noodle with, a little bit what that looks like?
Yeah, and 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 I think on a very, very high level, Mr. Fuji, I believe the majority, if not all, of those funds would be able to offset all general fund dollars because the initiatives that we're looking at are mental health supports. We're looking at tutors for any potential learning loss. We're looking at nursing. All of those are related to, and and I would believe, dealing with the aftermath of kids coming back from a pandemic, providing health supports for if we were in a pandemic or dealing with the the health needs. We've had one, one nurse that's been, I think, probably mostly living, um, quarantine and pandemic-related stuff. So really, we've kind of had one, one nurse solely devoted to the health needs and and another one that has had to do a lot with the the administration of everything. So, um, short answer is, I I believe that all the initiatives that we're we're trying to do fit into the very, very much the boxes that we're hearing are are related to the ESAR dollars, including round three.
And I think what I'm hearing, and correct, I don't want to speak for you, but it would be helpful then if we can show them, here's what the planned staffing ads are next year in that area, here's what they cost, and here's how much we think they come out of there versus how much more are we going into our savings?
And for how long? Like, I I I hear the one-shot.
Yeah.
Again, not the right term. I hear the 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 single-use aspect of that expenditure. So that can offset for how long and then where does that impact these other areas?
I think one year based on the, what--
Oh, really, one year?
Well, we--
Because some of the things we're picking up, well, some have grants, though, too.
Yeah, we we will have to, we'll have to look at that as a team of how long we stretch it out, just--
Because one year would not have, I mean, if it was spend it now, if you're going to use it towards this, one year would not have a downstream impact.
Ju- just giving you an idea, though, of the the timeline that we're given, and you may know this, living in kind of the 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 world of academic sum, is round three has to be completely spent out by September of 2024. Round two has to be spent out by, um, September of 2023, so--
Can you say that again, I'm sorry?
Yeah, the the round three dollars that were just approved in, I think, March or February, March, have to be spent out by September of 2024. The round two dollars, which were approved in December of '20, are through 2023. So that, I, there is the possibility that we could kind of spread those out to make sure that we're paying for certain pieces over a period of time.
Some of those, like the nursing, we've already moved, right? Like, taken out of the general fund and moved over?
The 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 nurse, um, that we hired and our mental health professional, those are, those are still or have been being paid out of Wellness and Success Dollars, the state grant dollars. So, um, we have not fully paid for all of those, and and we could use those for another year. In the current forecast, does, trying to figure out if those were, are going to be part of the next state formula, those, there's a lot of questions on if we can rely on those. But we we might be able to use carryover on those dollars for another year. But tho- those eventually, if we continue them, would come into the general fund and/or be, we'd use grant dollars for them.
So if we can maybe sit down with Mark on the staffing plan and just, I I know there are other things that we have to pay out of the ESAR money. Um, we pay for the online curriculum, obviously, the gallons and hand sanitizer, things like that. But that last round is probably a little bit more what we can use for staffing.
Correct.
And with that, I think it'd be helpful, you mentioned something that I was thinking about, which are those wellness dollars from the state? So even, I think, to Steve's question, just seeing that, what that full package looks like of things that we're hopeful will still exist. But but realistically understand they could go away.
And and we have, because we we have seen, we already had before, we knew about the wellness dollars two years ago, we had built in that we needed another nurse. So we were planning on doing that. It just helped that we were able to use these student wellness and success dollars for that. So ever since then, knowing that we were only guaranteed for two years on those dollars, we have built that coming in, back into as a cost into the forecast. So that that, those pieces are built in already.
And even with that, the idea that, you know, the district just upgraded to two nurses for, which is nowhere near what what the standard would be.
Right, right.
The other thing, and Brad, I recognize you very clearly articulated three points and and did so in such a concise manner, but I I feel like there's another layer of confusion that will occur, especially with things like the Dispatch article saying that-- saying that Ohio school funding may finally be fixed and how we are, uh, still not, um, fixed, as it were, as a big walnut local school district. Uh, the article specifically that I'm referring to was last Sunday. And it shows how even as a district that has been fully in person since day one, uh, where, as the only one in the county, the other three districts are by 2027 seeing a net increase of 800,001 million and 32 million dollars, where our net increase over the next seven years might be a grand total of 500,000, uh, which doesn't cover any of the types of things that this district needs in points one, two, or three, uh, from Mr. Schneider's conversation. So I feel like there's also that level of confusion as it relates to big walnut specifically.
Yeah. No, that's a, that's a great point, Mr. Fuji, because you, you hear these conversations on a state or national level. And to one point, um, statutorily and constitutionally, the fair funding model would be fixing the, um, kind of the formula, but it, that, that fix basically keeps us pretty much where we're at.
Right.
So, great point.
Well, one thing that I don't want to lose sight of in, in talking about these ESER monies and, you know, this, this one-time funding that we're getting is I think we can all accept that where we stand before the pandemic is behind where we need to be. Um, and considering that once all of our students are back in person, we know that there's going to be gaps, whether those are academic, social, emotional. And, you know, the whole point of this fund, of these ESER funds is to help us correct that gap. So while this may help us stretch the money we have a little bit longer, I don't know that that is achieving the, the goal that we need to be achieving. Um, I don't want to sacrifice, you know, once our kids do come back and we're able to assess those gaps. I don't want to have to sacrifice, you know, what we're doing and, and where we want to go to try to get everyone back up to speed. It'll just put us further behind. So keeping that in mind as well.
So regroup next Thursday? If you've got any additional questions, kind of like Steve's request, feel free to float those to Jeremy and get some stuff together with Angie and Mark.
And I feel like request might be a bit of a strong word, only from the standpoint, that would help me.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I recognize May is chaotic at best, but that would help me be able to make a decision.
Suggestion?
Thank you. I, I hate that idea of making requests.
Request is too strong.
Polite request?
Uh, general.
Please.
All right. Did you have anything else on that?
Well played.
Or anything else, my answer was?
I don't think so for today.
All right. Um, that would bring us to board members' items of interest. So I'll just kind of open the floor here. If anybody's got anything you'd like to contribute.
That, well, I maybe.
Oh, go ahead.
As I've, uh, tried to speak to the strength of the staff and this kind of unique year, I wanted to express some appreciation for, as changes kind of roll down, choir had a senior choir night last night and so did band, is my understanding. Uh, and while parents were really, really respectful of, you know, just a few tickets, being able to enter, uh, the opportunity to hear kids sing, uh, indoors was really, really nice. And the, uh, way that the district has chosen to handle, uh, these changes specifically, not just the administrators, but also the staff in terms of their adaptability, resilience and, uh, remaining a student-focused organization has been remarkable. So my continued appreciation in that way.
Thank you, Steve. Sounds like a good one to end on then. Um, I'm going to go out a little bit out of order here. I'm going to go to public participation since we're in the participation point here. So, um, item nine is public participation. It's a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting school district business. It's not considered a public community meeting. This is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please reference criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. Do you have any requests for participation, either online or virtual?
No.
Okay. All right. Then that'll bring us to item eight one. It's recommended the board approve the resolution authorizing a contract with Garland Company Incorporated to design built solutions for the roof restoration project at Big Walnut Elementary School based upon Ohio revised code 167.081. Contracts procured through regional council and governments. Could I have a motion please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Did you want to speak to this one?
Um, yes. Hopefully you received the emails from Doug. He is out of town today. So he wanted to get that out to you early so you had a chance to look. Um, not aware of any questions. I will attempt to answer any, if you do have any at this point. But I know that he presented on this last meeting and we've talked about it quite a bit. This again is that project of, uh, replacing the roof at Biwi, which again is in two phases. Uh, we don't have enough PI funds to do it all this year, so it'll be partially this year and then partially next year.
Any questions for Angie or Jeremy?
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item eight two, it's recommended the board approve the resolution authorizing a contract with Train US Incorporated for the roof restoration project at Big Walnut Elementary School based upon Ohio revised code 167.081 for contracts procured through regional council of governments. Could I have a motion please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think Steve made it in.
And this obviously is part of the same project, but this would be for, we have the rooftop units for the HVAC and this is for that piece of it. Um, I know Doug talked previously, but just a reminder, we want to do those at the same time. So it really helps with the efficiency of it and minimizing any kind of leaks.
Anything for Jeremy or Angie on this one?
And this one has to be rebid when it goes out next year again. This is the one?
It would, I, it's all through the council of governments. I'm not sure if, if their bid expires. Um, I, I believe what we talked about is that the unit pricing may slightly change depending on the, the pricing next year.
So we would have an opportunity if it went up too much to look at a different vendor. But the way it works through this model is that we don't have to technically bid it. We would go through the council of governments process.
Thank you.
There's nothing else?
Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item 11, schedule the next board meeting, next regularly scheduled meeting is May 20th, right here, 6:30 PM. Number 12, executive sessions, recommended the board under executive session to consider employment appointment of a public employee official, prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning compensation or other terms or conditions of employment and to discuss confidential information related to negotiations with political subdivisions regarding requests for economic development assistance. Could I have a motion please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leanna. Jeremy?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Now, we do not anticipate taking any public action after our executive sessions. Thank you all for joining us on the stream today.